Call this meeting of the board of commissioners to order as soon as we have prayer from Reverend Don Miller from Bentonville Christian Church.
Gary Naylor gave me permission to tell a little quick story, so this is all along, Gary. It's really a good story. I go to the Fayette County Jail every week. I have been going there for about five years or so and do Bible study. We call it church. I also go to the Fayette County Public Library and work the library sales. Last, let me start with the Fayette County Library. The last library sale, I always go and help with the book collections and always buy some for myself. This last time, I bought three bags full. And I always take them to the Fayette County Jail when I go. Generally, it's full of Bibles or other good, good Christian books. Two weeks ago, I took my collection to Fayette County Jail and put them on the table. And it was, one of the books that was there was a book called Purpose Driven Life by a fellow named Rick Warren. So I sat on the table and this young man looks at that book and said, "My dad told me last night to read that book." And I said, "Here it is." And I just tell you that because it's not my story. It's the God that we pray to's story. Would you pray with me? Father, we're thankful for this time we have just now to come to this meeting. Father, we know that my story that I just gave is a story that's told in this community over and over and over again, where people do your will and people's lives are changed because of that. Father, we're so thankful for that. Father, be with this meeting. Bless these fellows and lady that as they meet that they'll make good decisions and decisions that will be beneficial to our county. Father, we're so thankful that Luda King is back with us today. We know that her story is a story of love and compassion with her family and with others. And we know, Father, that prayer is powerful and we just continue to give prayers for her. Father, be with her during the rehab. Help her, Father, to be persistent and have courage for that. Father, we just also pray for those who will be doing her rehab, that they'll be kind and patient with her and lead her along. Father, we're thankful for all the county employees who work day in, day out, giving the best that they have for the county and for each one of us. And Father, again, we're so thankful for your son, Jesus, who came into this world to give us an opportunity of eternal life, but also, Father, he gives us an opportunity for abundant life each and every day. And Father, we're just thankful for this Thanksgiving season that we have that reminds us again that we need to continue to be thankful for you, to you, for you each and every day. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections in this?
I'll move to prove an answer last minute. Second.
Ben, move the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Open bids for reassessment. Where are the bids?
Please. Can I do that now?
Well, you've got it here, so I just assumed that was what I was supposed to do. It looks like we're probably gonna need to look at these later. Do we have any collateral terms or any?
I got one. I've just got to dig for it.
Mr. Naylor, I recommend that we look for these later.
We have a couple of representatives who brought in their bids. And if you could open it and I read the company and what the bid was, it's usually what's been done.
Okay.
And if I may have one copy to take, there should be like three copies in there, three, four.
I've got four copies.
Four, yes. There should have been four. So there's.
Kathy, can you speak what this bid process is representing?
This is for the next, the 2022 reassessment. It's a four-year process that it'll start next year. And the state has changed it for this reassessment, just concluding for 2018. The reassessment is that we're supposed to visit every parcel in the county. And how the state has it set up currently is a quarter of the parcels are visited each year. So starting in May of 2018, a quarter of the parcels will be visited and it'll continue on until four years. And also, that includes any visitation with, as far as the new construction. In January, they go out and they visit the sites that might be something that needed, made it a house, it's only 50% complete. They'll pick it up as 100% complete if that's the case, or it might just be a deck or, and then also removals if someone takes down a barn or a rain bin or anything out in the county or in town. They'll do that. And then a large part of it too is annual adjustment. It's called our trending. So they'll review the sales that we have had over the year. And since Fayette County doesn't really have a lot of sales sometimes in some neighborhoods, maybe the past two years. And then whatever figures if, just an easy explanation, if for the most part, the sales in a neighborhood are for more than what we have them assessed for, then factors figured and it's put on every parcel, dwelling, residential in that neighborhood. If for the most part, the sales were greater, less than what we had assessed for, then a percentage is calculated and everything in that neighborhood is, might be lowered. And if there's no significant changes, then everything stays the same. So that covers a lot of, not just the reassessment, but also picking up new construction, doing removals, doing the annual adjustment and.
Okay. So the bids that we're looking at are for the total of the four years?
Yes.
Or is this per year?
This is for the four years.
Okay.
We pay out, normally, right now, we pay out by month.
Can you give me some just ballpark figure of man-hours that are involved for these dollars?
Well, the gentleman we have right now, he's living in Fayette County. And so he's, he's in, he works every day from Monday through Friday. And I don't know if he works the weekends or not, if maybe he has to go out. I don't know that because he works, and he has a place in our office, and he's here every day, except maybe he has to go to class or they get some vacation time too. So they're employed by the company that we, Advalorm Solutions is our current company and he works for them. But Eric Johnson's here with us now and he's been in every day. And this is how a current vendor has set it up before, I mean, set it up with us now. Because before, we had somebody who worked in the county, but they weren't necessarily here every day.
So basically, one person works full-time?
Yes.
On it for, okay.
I don't know if it says in there, but there are 14,058 persons that they've been visiting.
My beloved deeds are written.
Over four years.
Over four years.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I mean, the assessment, in my opinion, the reassessment has changed an awful lot. I mean, it used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, every 10 years and it had to be done in that year.
Yeah, within an 18-month period.
Yeah.
But now I think it's more, one, well, I think, I don't know all that the state and legislators had in mind too, but one thing that's been nice is now it's, vendors can have, like we have Eric, he's gone and has his Level 3, which is required to do any type of assessing. So he's gone within a year's time. It's four weeks of class plus one use path. That takes three days and you have to pass tests. But by having his Level 3 now and he's here in our office, he's trained and you're not getting someone like just to do a 12-month of work every 10 years. So you get a lot better assessments, you get a lot better people working on the assessments. Any company, I mean, that would be for any company. It's just that makes more reliable information that we can have because these people are consistent with their assessments when they go out. They've been there once and they get familiar with it and then familiar with our county. So it's worked better, well, Fayette County, and I can't speak for other counties, but in that sense, I think vendors, it's been a better thing for them and a better thing for the county to have a consistent, somebody doing it every year.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you bringing me up to date on that and giving me a little bit of an education.
I think it's complicated. It's, it's.
Do you want to just read the companies and their bid dollars?
Okay. This is Lexer Appraisal Services. From Dayton, Ohio. And they say it's an operation division, Luxer Enterprises, a privately owned mass appraisal firm, Form 2005. Their principals have over 115 years of experience in mass appraisal and CMA systems industry, working in a wide range of counties and local states over that entire period of time, including Indiana. And their fee is $375,000 and a performance bond of $6,000. And it gives all the things that they will do in this bid proposal. And this is Advalorm, who this company would currently have been using. Their bid is $355,680.
Trying to find the numbers page. Did you find it? You know, we are required to be a certain size print when they make these things.
Really?
Is there a representative from Tyler Technologies here?
They weren't able to come. It's, may I come back there or?
Yeah. Hold it easy. We don't know what we're looking for. It ought to be close to their cover page, but.
Kathy, I think it's on page 11.
11.
Of the contract. It's either 11 or 13. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's 11.
A little print.
These might be fine.
They're not gonna charge anything. That's the one we want. Is this Tyler, take that, do you give a line? He's just been held.
He's been sorry.
The one we, just announced the company and the price for feet. And they'll slide her.
Maybe you don't know how much they were charging.
Yeah, yeah.
This is reminding everybody.
Yeah. No. We're just announcing the price later. Yes. One page or the second page. What you been thinking? We come up with. You were the outside company and, or did you?
No, I didn't. We also have a bid from Tyler Technologies, but we cannot find out how much it's using. Kathy's going through trying to find.
Have you found it?
Did you find it, Kathy?
J. did. The bid for, their bid is $335,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Derek from Ohio also.
I would make a motion that we take these bids under advisement and receive a recommendation from Kathy after she goes through them.
And then we'll have Mr. Jed look through the.
Yes. The bid is.
I'll second that motion.
We moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, for being input. I appreciate you bringing me up to speed on it. Okay.
Courthouse Department Maintenance, Bill Gray.
Okay, I got representative from Duke, but first of all, I want to go through a couple of bids on boilers. I've got a boiler down, a hot water heater boiler down at the jail. It's completely gone. The heat exchanger is burnt out of it. Two bids in. Johnson Controls was $34,414. And North Mechanicals out of Richmond was $15,747. I think Johnson's had a lot more work involved, but this is just replace a heater. We're just gonna replace the heater with one, just like we got on the other side. We're running on backup now.
Okay.
And so if it goes down, we're completely out of hot water over there. So.
Do you see the capabilities of getting that third bid?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is that, did you say the other company was out of Richmond?
North Mechanicals.
Have you dealt with them?
Yes, in the past.
Are they?
They're a good reputable company. I mean, they're.
Why is there so much difference in the bid?
Well, from what I can read on the bid, Johnson's is talking about piping and stuff, which doesn't, I don't think needs to be changed. The piping's been changed, so.
So all we need is a heater and not all the additional?
Yes, all we need is a heater. And the only other one I had was here in the courthouse on the hot water heat boiler. We've got two. We're running on one now. We've got a, a, let me say this right. That's the wrong one. Can't read that. It's got a bad air fuel valve. This is the main valve that runs the fuel into the tank. And it's, got a bid from Johnson at $6,300. I got a bid from North Mechanicals at $5,286. That's about a thousand bucks difference.
Yes.
This is, the boiler here is not as critical as the jail. The jail, like I said, we're running on backup hot water heater now. We need to get, need to get started on that and get something in here. Because if it goes out and we can't repair it, then we're out of hot water.
Can we wait till the first year of the?
On the courthouse, we can wait till the first year.
Okay. On the new budget?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we proceed with the $15,000 bid for the boiler at the jail and ask Jane to advertise for an additional and Kim Cap to cover that.
And Johnson's also bid just to change the heat exchanger itself was $11,548. That would be a mistake because you're just prolonging, having to replace it down the road anyway. So, okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we haven't.
I'm going to second his motion.
He's seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thanks, Bill, for getting on there.
You're welcome. I got Duke Energy here to present. May you like to salute him?
Hello.
Good morning.
I had done an energy assessment, energy audit. I'm the Fayette County Jail as well as the Fayette County Work Release Center. I believe you have them in front of you. The, I guess, the start is, any questions for me regarding the program, how it works? What, basically what this, the program is, is it's the Duke Small Business Energy Saver Program. It's a program you've been paying into on your bill every month. There are federal funds, state funds, as well as some own money in this. This is an incentive to upgrade the entire Work Release Center as well as the jail to all LED tubes. Substantial energy savings in it as well as substantial incentive money from Duke. I'm gonna start with the jail. I guess I'm gonna start with Work Release Center because that's the one that's on my tablet. The, and this is a turnkey project. We come in, we have the workman's, workman's comp, carrying our insurance. This is us actually coming in, doing all of the work, removing all of the old materials, recycling, taking out all the old ballast, the old tubes. So it is not just us dropping them off for this poor gentleman to have to figure out how to hang in the ceiling. There's a, so there are some other things besides the incentive that we give. We signed up Union County yesterday, we're doing their jail in their courthouse, same program. And one of the big things that's not included in here after the incentive is, for the next five years, we guarantee every light that we put into the, into the property. So you're, for the next five years, because we're using all LEDs, your maintenance costs go to zero and free up a little, free up a little bit more time. So on the, on the Work Release Center, the total project cost is $10,402.23. Duke is an upfront incentive of $4,047.02, leaves 63,5521 if you do it in 12 payments. Nothing is invoiced until after the project is complete. So for instance, in this case, we'd probably be doing the project in December, invoicing in January. So if you want to do it as a lump sum, there's an additional 5% discount, we'd get it down to $6,037.45. That would give it, with your monthly savings of $190 in energy savings, gives it a, just under a 32-month, 32-month return on investment. Strong in that you're just not gonna have to touch anything over there for years. Just leave it alone. On the jail. The, I made one small change to the jail from what you have in front of you. It actually reduced the, your cost by a little over $200. So the total project cost on the jail is $38,383.72. The Duke incentive went up to $23,866.46, which leaves a customer contribution. So we're paying a little over 62% of that project. The reason in the difference in the two projects is, this is based on actual energy savings and the jail has long run hours, a lot of 24-hour burning bulbs that just, the meters just turn in 24/7. The more energy that we're saving, the more incentive that Duke gives. So that's why there's a bigger incentive on this versus the Work Release that didn't have the same amount of run hours and using the same amount of energy. So the lump sum on this would be $13,791.40, which brings the return on investment on this with an energy savings of $1,121 a month down to about a year, about 12, 12 to 13 months. So very strong project. And this is, again, every, every tube, every lamp in the jail will be either replaced with an LED or there, in some cases, there are actually some new fixtures in here that we had to replace because of safety and things in the jail. Jail is a little different than your, than your standard ceiling, as well as in the, we also do electronic, electronically controlled cooler motors. So we're actually changing out the motors in the walking cooler and the walk-in freezer. And there's great savings in those because they just turn 24/7. They just never stop. So you've got the older, older shaded pole motors in there, we put the new electronic control motors in there and that's where, you know, a lot of the savings is coming from, is just getting everything up to the newest, the newest standard of what's out there.
What did, what did you say the lump sum was again?
On this one, what you have, I believe, is around $14,000. It's actually $13,791.40.
$7,9140, okay. Thank you. Questions for me?
No, we just need to figure out where we'll find the money.
Okay. And again, it is invoiced after, so you were mentioning next year's budget. Or we do do a monthly, if you want to do a monthly. I have, actually, in my municipalities, probably two-thirds do the lump sum and a third do the monthly. Because the nice thing about the monthly is if you look at your net monthly, you're saving $1,121 a month, the payment's $12.09. You're looking at $87.85 a month to redo all the lights in the jail. That's, sometimes that's a really good way to let it pay for itself.
But you're, for instance, on the jail project, you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're, you're showing an annual energy savings cost of almost $13,000, correct?
Actually, with the new motors I put in, it's actually a little over that. It's $13,463 is the change that I made.
And that's real numbers?
That's real numbers. We're audited on that.
We'll see that.
Yes, sir. We're audited on that every single year by a third party. We have to be within 5%. Typically, we've been within 1% to 2%. That is based on real numbers, real run hours, and that's why we walk through, how many hours are the lights on in here? And it's a very specific, we just don't do a broad brush and assume everything's on 24 hours. We walk every single room, how many hours are these lights on? What exact type of fixtures do we have in here? And that's why if you look at that one page, that's why there are so many individual lines, because we walked every single room and every single room is calculated based on what is actually in the ceiling there, what we're actually replacing it with and what are the actual run hours. Because this program's been along, around quite a while and if, if we were telling you, you're gonna save $13,000 and you save $2,000, I'm pretty sure you're gonna have the local news cameras out chasing me around. I don't like that. So it's, we, this, this program has been in place almost four years and it continues to be in place because we have to be pretty darn accurate. They do audit every, every account. And it continues to be in place because we have to be pretty darn accurate. They do audit every, every account every year. So.
Now, you're saying like if we have a light bulb blow, you guys come in and fix it?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a light bulb blows, you come in and fix it? The motor burns up?
Yes. In the first 12 months, actually, the labor, everything is included in the first 12 months. What we find with LEDs is if they last a month, they're going to last 10 years. If anything happens, it's going to happen in the pretty early scenario. After that, it is a replacement. If you have a lamp burn out, and actually what we're doing with Union County because of it being a jail is we're actually leaving a handful of spare lamps there because it, lighting is so important. So if something would, would go out or whatever, there's, there's a, there's something there immediately to, to replace.
So are you retrofitting the fixtures?
We are retrofitting the majority. There are some that we're actually replacing. All the exteriors will be replaced with, so this also includes all your exteriors. So much better lighting on the exterior of the jail, which we always want that. So if it sneaks away, we can find them. And there are quite a few areas we were actually putting in new fixtures. Because of the, because of the type of lighting that was there, we don't have, there's no retro kit for some of the, some of the waterproof housings and things like that. So the worst area is where we actually are putting in new fixtures. Otherwise, we're retrofitting. We always want to do it the most economical way. And there's nothing wrong with the vast majority of the fixtures that are out there. So to replace them with a brand-new fixture, the expense just doesn't justify it. But it is all new, all new drivers, ballasting, and lamps. So it's not just a take out the old lamp, pop in a new lamp. It's the guts will be replaced. Just no need to actually replace the entire fixture.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll move the table list until the next meeting. So I'd second it so that we can check with Michelle on funding.
Okay. Community Corrections.
Oh, she's here. I did.
I would just like to say that I would like for the Community Corrections Board to go ahead and.
You can.
And I will make one lump sum payment. We have an issue over there that we feel has been trying to address for a year. It's already possibly $4,000 to change those ballasts. Because anybody that's been in the building, you'll hear beeps. And they were supposed to change them all out in the dorm. I paid for it. Now I got three. They didn't change out that are weeping round the clock, 24 hours a day. So those got, I mean, it, it has to wake those guys up trying to sleep. So at least for Community Corrections, I have the funds.
Okay. That's what I was. Okay. All right. That's fine. We can.
Do you want to make a motion to accept this bid?
Yeah.
Is that for the jail and for the Community Corrections?
I'll second it.
And you made the motion. Mark made the motion. Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There were three ayes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle, I apologize. I didn't see you sitting back there.
That's fine.
I just wanted to make sure that you could pay for those without your funds.
Yes.
Okay. Before we all get it. Bill, can you work that out?
You approve both?
Yep.
Only the sign after the meeting. Get them back to him.
Okay.
Okay. Go on, he's in problem.
You'll, you'll, you'll take care of scheduling and everything?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
One more job I just wait.
Just remind me.
Betty Jones?
Good morning.
Hi, Betty. How are you?
I'm good. How are you all today? I'm here because we have had someone in my office retire. And I have had to procure another employee, which is much nicer than saying steal from the probation department. That's why I'm up next. But yeah, we're, we're going to have, we're going to have a little knockdown here. The position of Criminal Secretary for the, it's actually the person who handles the Superior Court cases with us and works most closely with the deputy that handles those. She retired after many long years of service. And we have hired Crystal Richardson, who is a current employee of the county in the probation department. So I think there's some of that wizardry, wizardry that Jane does about paying, because the pays were different. But I have a 144 that will be presented at the next meeting. I do have a special request about that. First, I'm asking that you'll approve Crystal coming on board with my department and becoming an employee. Remaining an employee, but changing, coming to work in a different office.
Motion to approve the 144 request. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
The procedural question that I have about this is that the week that I'm supposed to come for counsel in the evening to present this 144 is the week that we're mandated to be at State Conference in our continuing education. Would you all have any problem if counsel would maybe allow Mrs. Downer to present that on my behalf? Would you have any problem with me not traveling back in the evening to attend that meeting?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if counsel president's fine with it, then.
I'll, and we'll speak with them before.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Michael King.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm not sure if you missed him. Richard is over here hiding behind the podium.
Okay.
Since he normally goes before me, I thought maybe you missed him.
Well, he's not in full print.
Oh.
So I didn't know if he even wanted to speak today or not. If he was just here observing.
Okay. First thing I've got is the Fayette County GIS Limited Use Agreement that was brought to us by a company called TransFinder. This is based, they'll be taking our GIS data to come up with better bus routes for the Fayette County schools, I believe, to save gas and time and risk and that kind of thing. This is just one of the standard agreements. I'm not sure if this is one of the ones where we're going to get a fee involved, but it's not going to cost the county anything either way.
Okay.
So we may get $250 for it. We may not.
Is it a one-time use of the?
I believe this is a one-time use. So all I need is that approved and signed, and I can send it off to them. And WTH will take care of all the data, all that. We don't have to do anything.
Do you see a problem?
No, it looks like it's the one we already done.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought it did. Motion to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
The only other thing I've got is the prosecutor would like to get two smaller tablet slash laptop computers, which is the quotes that I had there. One quote came in from SCW for, one of them, it was $1,291, and for the other one, it was $1,037. And I found them on Amazon for $749 for the one and $977 for the other. So, and the third quote I got was well over $1,700 for both of them. So they were completely out of the ballpark. And they have the funds for this. It would not be coming out of my IT funds. The prosecutor has a line item for it.
How many?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's one of each model. One of the Surface Book and one of the Surface Laptop or Notebook, depending on who's listing it.
And since I'm standing here with a laptop, if I might jump in to tell you why, where, this is actually the computer that I use at my desk. I don't have a desktop, but the laptops are so that we can take advantage of the e-file into its fullest and be able to go to electronic. The tablet form will let us go to electronic form in court rather than standing with this and working. We'll have a smaller device. And we're hoping that that will eliminate a lot of paper and paper shuffling, which will eliminate a lot of cost.
And it's also that laptop that she's got is a 15.6-inch screen and weighs about nine pounds, whereas these are a 13.5-inch screen and weigh about four. So.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for me or anything?
Richard, did you have anything to bring before the floor?
Not really. I can let you know about a few things, I guess. Had to relocate it up here on the hill with that gas line because the ticket expired. Once that gets all located, we'll get on that. And I talked to Randy Powell. Me and Randy got together the other day with the roadway we take care of up there in the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay.
After Thanksgiving, he's coming down. Me and him both are going to go up there and walk around and check that out. I was going to tell Warren, since he's here, that tank car down there on Columbia between New York Road and Coal Train, the plate, usually it, the plate covers them holes in them tank cars. Some of you's familiar with that. The plate gave away, so the road was collapsing. We was able to get inside of it and weld a new plate inside of that, got that taken care of. Can't really think of anything else. I'm sure there's something that I can think of.
Have you?
And you said something about, is that on 300 North right before you came into Fairview?
Yes. Yeah. Have you been up on, I'm trying to think, 600? Where the gully was washed?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it satisfactory now or?
So far. Try not to burn me.
Thank you. Thank you for getting that.
Joey, did you have anything you wanted to bring before us today?
Not really. I talked to Colin before the meeting about the medical contract, the status of that. He's still working on some.
The healthcare contract?
Yes.
Did you find out the details on that savings?
I'm in, I'm actually in contact with Lisa Scrogg, and she says she will get back to me and answer on that. And I needed updated contract because I think you pointed out that you had, it said the start date was 2017. And obviously, it's not January 1st, 2017. So hopefully she'll send me a new one within the week.
Within the week. And we can get that signed then. Okay. Great. Thank you. We've got Joey up on here now.
I, I got a road, or a speeding complaint, I guess. I heard by the trailer court on 475 South. From the 121 to the first block, you've already heard about it, but I'm just going to let you know it here. Well, we got it. Can, we, here I have the surveyor. Can you put a sign up for that first block to slow it down right in there by the trailer court and those houses?
475?
Yeah, 475 South. It's right there by the Old Town Trailer Court.
I'll have to look, do a study?
Yeah, just, you know, maybe we could lower that speed limit right there in that first block here.
I had a guy out there probably a month ago that was out there for two or three nights.
Yeah.
Made several stops. So we'll just have to come back. Another presence. It's hard with one guy on all the time.
Hey, Jenna?
Oh, that's Betty introduced. She's taken one of my people, which Crystal's an excellent employee. She'll do an excellent job at probation. So that left an opening. I decided to advertise for the receptionist position. Crystal was the juvenile secretary. We've moved someone that's been there a while to that position. We had a total of, I think it was 45 applications.
Wow.
I interviewed eight of those. And I'm asking for Commissioner's approval to hire Regina Watson. That's, that's based on her past relatable experience. I have an interview questionnaire for each person that I score. So it's based on the higher score. I've done a reference check. She had two out of the three I got, made contact with. They had very good references for her. Done a criminal history check. Everything's fine with that. And I'm also on for the agenda of the next council meeting for the 144. I didn't have anyone apply from another county position. I advertised that the week before. I opened it up to the public, so.
I have a motion to approve the harm. I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Michelle, were you here for anything besides the lighting? Okay. Warren?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sending the application for Bridge 90 to NDOT. So we should know end of February, they say we're rewarded a grant to replace that bridge. And then I've been surveying out Quite Road for the Community Crossings Grant. And then I'm going to work, move on to the Harrisburg Ridge after that. We have to have a contractor sign before we get our, actual get the money. And we have to do all that by April 15th. So get it done this winter and get it advertised probably January.
Good.
That's all I had.
All right. Thank you very much, Warren. David Baker?
I have two people to bring before you to hire for part-time 901 dispatchers. One is Maria Jones. She was a dispatcher from 2004, 2010. She's got, you know, she knows, she knows the, she knows the job. There's a few little things I'm going to need to, going to need to figure out again, but it'll come back to her, I think. Second person is a guy reprimanded by Ryan Mont. He's, you know, he's a full-time dispatcher from Richmond named Andrew Davis. No, no dispatch experience. Smart guy. I think he'll do, I think he'll do okay after, you know, after he figures it out. Not a lot of, not a lot of applicants. And, and I think maybe there were two that I looked at and just had criminal histories that we couldn't NCIC want to approve them. So it's kind of hard to become a dispatcher with a criminal record. So those are the two people. I wasn't exactly sure about this Form 1.4. I have them with me. I'm not exactly sure what to do with them. So I can, yeah.
Give them to the boss.
The way they printed off my printer, they were, it was weird. So I figured I'd just wait around and talk to her at the end.
Very good.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Pertaining to the part-time people and, and the lack of applicants. I know in the past, we've not been able to hire county, other county.
Yeah.
People. However, could you put out some feelers to Henry County and Newcastle?
Oh, yeah. That's a good idea.
Because they are doing it.
Oh, yeah. You're, you're saying to see if we can do it also?
Yeah, to see how they're getting around.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
To, because we've got probably some jail officers that would be interested.
I know.
That, that would help out their, their revenue as well.
Did you say Henry and Wayne?
I'm sorry?
Did you say Henry and Wayne are doing it?
Henry is. I know for sure.
Henry, okay, okay.
Henry with, and New, primarily Newcastle.
Okay.
Because they're doing it in the, not necessarily dispatch, but they're doing it with their ambulance service.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're hiring some of the other city. They're, they're, they're hiring some of the other city employees for part-time help at the ambulance. And I'm, I don't understand how they're getting around that.
That would help open up a pool of applicants.
Yes, yeah, it might help you.
Yeah.
Josh Russell, you might contact him at EMS up there.
Okay.
And maybe he can give you some ideas.
All right.
Who to talk to, maybe in the clerk treasures office or something.
Okay, all right. Sounds great.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Paula Moppen?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We were recently awarded a grant, it's an overdose response pilot grant, and part of that requires that we hire a part-time coordinator. It's completely a grant-funded position, it's a one-time grant opportunity, so it would be a one, one year and, and done, twenty-five hour a week position. It would be, like, well, there's a, I went ahead and created a job description, I gave you guys a copy of, of the grant application. It's through the state, they've received sixteen grant applications and they were awarded, they, they awarded five and we were one of them, so I'm kind of proud that, that we were The, what this grant will do, it's, it will create an overdose response and review team, just coordinate all the stakeholders in the community, gather, this, this position will gather data and statistics, so it'll all be in one central location. It'll help implement the state's overdose response plan in our county, just coordinate all the overdose information, data, statistics. And then once, once it's all implemented, then the health department will assume all the responsibilities at the end of the year, so I, I will.
So this is, this is one year now?
Mm-hmm.
There's no hope for renewal or?
No.
Continuity?
Not at this point.
Okay. So basically, it's more of a contractual service than anything?
Yeah.
Than an employee?
Right. And it's the, the state's, the Essence database, it's the health, it's the surveillance database that they have right now, that we use it primarily for, like, to track flu, the flu season, things like that. They, they're, they are implementing that to, to track overdoses, or they're going to implement it. So that part of this position will be to, to implement the Essence program.
So has the council approved the position yet?
No.
Okay.
No, I just need to, right now I'm just asking permission to, I can't think of the word, to seek somebody for the position, it's kind of like a, they, they didn't give us a whole lot of time to prepare for this, it was, like, they, they, the state gave us the, the application, we were on a deadline, and then, like, next week, or not next week, next month, early next month is when they're gonna come for a site visit. We don't necessarily have to have somebody then, but, you know, it's like hurry up and wait.
My only concern, Paula, is that if we give you the okay to seek out a person prior to the council creating the position, then we're kinda putting a cart before the horse.
I see what you mean.
Do you agree or disagree?
Yeah, you guys could go ahead and, like, review her job description, and then at your next meeting, approve that pending council's approval, so she can.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could do that, and then you could do it all, the first meeting of the month.
Senator.
The council's meeting and ours.
Okay.
We could review this and, and approve it next month.
All right. That's good.
For the next meeting, okay.
That'll work.
All right. Because I just hate to get to.
Yeah, I understand.
Hate to obligate the council.
They, you know, the state has to, they can deal with, it's as soon as they can get it, as soon as they.
Paula, should we, should we create an employment contract being a one-year now?
Possibly, sounds more like an independent contractor type situation, but yeah, possibly, I'll just see what we have, see if we have one we can already use.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Paul, do you have anything for us?
I do. So, front page in the newspaper today, there was information about the city joining a lawsuit against opioid distributors and pharmaceutical companies. We had an executive session last week with Cohen and Malau, the same firm that the city has retained for their lawsuit, and I have a retention agreement for them, for the county to, you know, jump on this train, lawsuits against the pharmaceutical companies and the distributors. There's no cost upfront, if we don't pay anything, if we don't recover, if we do recover, we pay their expenses and then the percentage in the agreement. And that is all dependent on when it's settled, if it's settled, or if we get a recovery trial, or they, if there's an appeal or not. So, I have that agreement. If you'd like to do that.
We'll recess until Mark gets back.
Yes, I think we should recess till Mark gets back. Call a meeting back to order?
I would make a motion that we enter into this agreement with this law firm, and I, I think there, we stand to gain some help through this lawsuit if we win, or our costs that we've been incurring with the opiate epidemic, therefore I would make a motion that we go ahead and enter into this agreement. I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
You'll take care of transport and the?
Yeah, I can do that.
Legal stuff and everything?
Yeah.
Does that require signatures from all three of you?
I believe there's a signature page on the back.
We'll put that with the signature, the stuff that needs to be signed.
We've got a whole stack of it back here someplace.
The.
Yep. Well, we, we discussed, no, old business, we have an insurance spousal carve-out.
We have talked about that in passing, and we wanted to look at some ways to save, save some money with our insurance plan and health insurance plan. And most, or quite a few employers down do it because employers are required to provide health insurance for their employees. But we don't want to create a hardship for our, the families of our employees as well at the same time, so I would, I would propose that we put a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar ceiling on that carve-out, that if, if the employee's spouse can obtain insurance for two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars or less, that they'd be required to go to their own employer. Is that how I need to word that, Jane?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second.
It's been moved in second that we would put a carve-out of a two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollar limit, so there'd be no hardship placed on our current employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Remise the capital plan.
Jane, you have that information?
Yeah, when Unbaugh prepared our bond information, they said that, that it was gonna pay a hundred-and-sixty. We raised that to a hundred-and-seventy, but then that affects our levy, tax levy in a negative way. So it was suggested that we go back to what Unbaugh originally put in their plan of the one sixty. So we would just be changing the first line of the capital plan from one seventy to one sixty, and then moving that ten thousand dollars down to the second line of courthouse operating. So.
Okay. You need a motion for that, then?
Please.
Go ahead and move to do what she suggested. Then I would, I would second Mark's motion.
Been moved in second that we change the capital plan from one seventy to one sixty and put the ten thousand in the courthouse operating expenses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And we have new businesses, Duke Energy, and I think we took care of that with Bill Gray, who was here. So Dan Parker? E D C.
Yeah. I'll slide that up there for you guys, you can look at that example.
Oh, my, isn't that pretty? Did you design that, Parker?
I, I did not design that, I wish I could take the credit for that, but I actually can't. First of all, Leota, so good to see you up and around, so sorry you had the accident. During, between the eighth and tenth, there was a workforce summit held in Austin, Texas, which I attended. In fact, I've been attending these since we became involved in the ACT initiative. And just for your information, let me give you just a little background about the ACT. It was founded in nineteen fifty-nine. ACT is a not-for-profit organization headquartered in Iowa City, Iowa, and dedicated to helping people achieve education and workplace success. ACT provides a broad array of assessment, research, information, and program management solutions in the areas of education and workforce development. As soon as I got the job back in two thousand fourteen, I was approached about this ACT Work Ready Community Initiative, and that, and of course, it was all kind of new to me, but I quickly found out that one of the big things, that site selectors, commercial real estate companies, family management companies, people that are looking to land and attract new business to their communities, one of the first things that is asked is, tell me about your, your workforce, tell me about your talent pool, what are you doing to enrich your talent pool? And if you're relying solely upon the state, the workforce development people, that's great, and that's good, but to really excel at this and to get, catch the attention of site selectors, people are getting involved in this, counties throughout the United States are. There's about a hundred-and-ninety counties throughout the United States. Program started in two thousand twelve, and there are only about six counties in Indiana, and it's the east-central Indiana cluster, that would be Delaware, Randolph, Wayne, Henry, Rush, and Fayette, that's it. And of those counties, the only one that doesn't show as certified on the ACT national map is Henry County. They qualified, but they're not certified for whatever reason. And Henry County and Fayette County really partnered together throughout the process. Really kind of thank former mayor Urban, he helped, he participated in paying for the costs, the travel costs for the academies, there were four of them back in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, which I attended along with a Work One representative. So what, what we had to do to become certified, we have a certain number of goals that ACT sets for Fayette County, dealing with emerging, current, and transitioning employees, and then there's also a component for employers. So in Fayette County, we have, we have twenty-four employers, and you are one of those employers. The county government is one of the employers that supports this ACT initiative. After we received this award that shows that we're certified and we get colored gold on the map, there is a, we've become a maintaining county, and we are eighty-eight percent of the way of completing our goals to be, to continue our certification and keep that. You know, all that really doesn't mean a lot until you understand what this does, is you look at that little, that little building block thing you got there, where it shows the NCRC down at one of the bottom block there to the, to the left, that work he's testing is what we do in Fayette County. Juniors and seniors can do it, those that are trying to achieve the NCRC, and you see that NCRC, which stands for the National Career Readiness Certificate. That's a certification that shows employers, this guy really wants a job, and he's, he has qualified to receive this certification in the areas of math, locating information, and there is a reading component in there as well. And when they pass that, they can receive this NCRC, and it's graded in a silver, gold, bronze, and platinum. And in Fayette County, we have, we have received, well, we have received, and I took a picture of it so I could stand in front of you and tell you about it. Yeah, we have six-hundred-and-sixty-eight NCRCs, or National Career Readiness Certificates, that have been earned in Fayette County, and as I stated earlier, we have twenty-four employers that are supporting this initiative, Stanton being one of them, Howden, almost all the machine shops up in the north end, and a variety, the high school, one of the employers, the county, the city. There's a wide variety of employers that are supporting this. What this does, it, it provides this, this building, connecting, and stacking of credentials so that the individual can elevate themselves, so that your son or daughter, or my son or daughter, or grandson or granddaughter can raise their level of competency and their ability to achieve a better job and do, and do better. I mean, that, that is the end goal, to help the community raise itself as time goes on from a workforce standpoint. So that when we're asked, what are you doing about your workforce, we can say, we've got it going on, not just the ACT Work Ready Community, we've got a workforce development center that we have housed up in the Ivy Tech building with Work One, with Ivy Tech being right next door, they can, they can march them right over to show where they, they take the classes to get qualified for other certifications. So, we have got some attention from the state because I think there's only one other county that's doing this, and that's Jay County. They, they've got a similar situation where they have a building that they have college satellite classes being taught, like we do with Ivy Tech, their Work One, they've also got a, a for-profit temp service. They've also got a, a for-profit temp service that are, that's in their building, and we're on the verge of having that ourselves, probably in January, we'll have a temp service in our building as well. So, I wanted to report to you, because you're supporting this, and it's appreciated. Our county appreciates it, our board appreciates it. We appreciate the county's support of economic development, you're setting an example, and it's very, very much appreciated. You have any questions for me?
Congratulations.
Oh, well, I, I didn't do it, I was just the.
You weren't there, it wouldn't have happened.
Well, it, a lot of people worked to make, make it happen, a lot of people did.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Janet, do we need to address this custom health benefit solution, or? That you sent out?
Is that the GPA?
Yeah, the GPA. Is there, is there a motion that needs to be?
Needs to be signed, so, yeah.
To approve that? Do those numbers work?
Something like last year.
Okay. You want that motion now?
Yes, I don't have any idea what you're talking about.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the fee schedule, is that correct terminology?
Yes.
For the group health insurance with GPA, which the numbers are the same as they were for two thousand seventeen.
Yes, much later.
Most all of them are.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Now, is that the official contract for?
The Apex one renews automatically, so yes, this is just the.
Just the fee schedule that goes with it?
Yes.
Okay.
The county that ministers it.
Okay.
Are there any patron concerns this morning?
I'd make a motion to pay payroll and claims, I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, to approve payroll and claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I'd accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion, second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.